Diane Slavens to be our clerk to start the meeting?
So move.
Motion made by trustee Snyderman.
I support.
Supported by trustee Berninski. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion passes. Treasurer Slavens, can you please take roll call?
Yes, trustee Berninski.
Good evening.
Trustee Foster.
Good evening.
Trustee Ganguly.
Good evening.
Supervisor Graham Hudek.
Good evening.
Clerk Segrist, he will be here but a little late. Treasurer Slavens, here, good evening. And trustee Snyderman.
I am here as well.
Welcome.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Madam Supervisor, my motion that we adopt the agenda is presented.
Support.
Motion made by Treasurer Slavens, supported by trustee Snyderman. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion passes. So, just to let everybody know, there's some dates in the back of the room and cookies if anybody would like to join in partaking of those. And so they were... So they were donated by Abdu's Market. They're celebrating Ramadan, which all of our Muslim community members are tonight. All right, then why don't we all stand and pledge allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hi Trevor, I know you're in the back room. I'm hearing some static, just to let you know. Okay, great. So tonight we have on our agenda, the study session, the 2024 proposed budget, and that will be led by Director Trumble.
Good evening, everybody. We are here to talk about the 2024 budget. So historically, you know, if you recall in the past, we would have always gone over the 23 budget. When we do this in the fall, we'll go over the budget that we're asking the board to adopt. And then we've always done the budget that's prepared kind of a year and a half in advance, if you will. This year, it's a little bit different because we're only looking at the 2024 budget at this point. We're not asking the board to adopt anything tonight. This is just the preliminary review of what the directors and the different full-time elected officials have requested to be put into their budget. Keep in mind that this budget was initially started over the summer. The directors and the different departments were entering all of their budget requests at that point in time, but the timing got pushed back a little bit. We had the priority-based budgeting going on, and that was taking up a lot of the department's time at that point, and that point of the year. So we are going to be going over the 24 requests. I'm gonna, oops, share my screen here.
Your office has actually been very busy because you're going through an audit right now, preparing the budget and working on PBB. So thank you for everything.
Thank you, thank you, yeah. At first, I probably should have started with the whole introductions. Carolyn is sitting to my right. Carolyn is our accounting manager. She and budget manager, she is the one who is really the brains behind the whole budget book. She gets all the people costs in. She works with the departments. She helps create new departments when we need to in the budget. She helps analyze everything. Between that and priority-based budgeting, Carolyn has been very busy this last year and has done a lot of work. And when you actually see, if you took a look at the first files that we sent over with that big, thick budget book, Carolyn is making sure all of that is put together and makes sense to the best of our abilities at this point in time. So thank you Carolyn for doing all that hard work.
Caitlin was helping out on all of that.
Correct. And behind, I don't know if the board has ever met Caitlin, but Caitlin Pavel, she is our, the finance, I can't remember the official title, but she also helps coordinate all this. She was key in getting the priority-based budgeting together. She understands that software. When anybody was having any issues, she knows that stuff. So we got a great finance team that is putting all this together. So they really deserve a lot of, all of the credit, really. So, thank you to both of you for all of your work on this. So what we're going to start with is the 2024 introducer, which I just talked about. I'm going to start off with reviewing the assumptions that were used in calculating some of the expenditures and the revenue that's out there. And then I'm going to turn it over to the departments to go over their individual requests. That's going to be a little bit more detail. We'll circle back. I'm going to kind of put all that information together to show you with what all these requests, what they look like, what the revenue looks like, what the expenditures as a total are going to look like. Get any kind of questions you have, any feedback, and then we'll move on from there. So as far as the revenue goes, I know we've talked about, and you've heard about, the increase in the property taxes. The inflation this year was huge. This last year was huge. So that inflationary impact that happened during '22 actually impacts our 2024 revenue, not our 2023. It impacts our 2024 revenue. So even though inflation exceeded 5%, the state law says the most you can raise your taxes is 5%. So our taxes will be going up 5% on the existing properties. It can go up higher than that with the new growth. So we did grow a little bit more. So we're actually assuming overall that the revenues, property tax revenue is going to go up by 6% because of the new construction. We've had that luxury the last few years, but you're going to see, you know, the building is slowing down a little bit. So we probably won't see that drastic of a difference between inflation and the new construction moving forward. But we still have that for '24. State shared revenue, we estimated that the state shared revenue is going to increase by 3% over 2024. And those are actually based on the state of Michigan. The state of Michigan gives some estimates on what they think they're going to provide, but that's all based on what people buy and how much sales tax they collect. So we'll see where that actually comes up. But based on how we've historically estimated, that seems to be reasonable. And then the other revenues are really based on prior years and estimate, estimation of future permits as far as the buildings go. But the majority of our revenue in the general fund especially is property tax and state shared revenue, and then in the other funds, property taxes.
Hi Wendy, sorry, I thought of this after I'd sent in my questions.
No problem.
But I was wondering, how does the state decide how much to give each municipality?
So the state shared revenue is based on what's in the Constitution. So the Constitution was set at, you know, back when the sales tax was actually 4%. So based on that, of the 4% sales tax that was collected, the state will distribute 15% to local government.
But how much, how do they determine what goes to the, like, is it based on the population?
It is based on population. Yeah, yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So then as far as the expenditures that the finance department puts in, we put in the, we put in the budget for the salaries and wages. And we base that on the current headcount that's in the budget. Between the '23 and '24 budget, there has been no increase in the full-time headcount that is in the budget. We put in a 3% wage increase for '24, or as the contracts, I don't believe there was any contracts different. So I think all of them are at 3% for 2024. Pension costs, based on the past, have always gone up about 10%. So we estimated that to go up by 10% each year. Medical costs, we put in at 7%. That was working with the HR manager to figure out what they were comfortable with as far as the medical costs. And then the prescription drug costs have been going up more than the medical costs themselves. So that's in there at about an 11% increase. The OPEB funding, so the current retirees' actual medical costs are in there, assuming an increase of 10%. And then we do have, again this year, for '24, a million dollars allocated to pre-fund the OPEB, worked into this budget. The other things that I wanted to, actually, was there any questions on the expenditure assumptions before I move on? Okay. One thing we wanted to cover as well, the other stuff that is included in the budget, these are the specific board goals identified from 2022, and I wanted to go through all of them. All of these were our items that have already been incorporated into the budget or future budgets. So we had the increase in the programming to the diverse community. That was a $20,000 recurring cost that the board approved. So that's been incorporated into the budget. A $10,000 recurring fee for increase in senior services has worked in there. The one-time pre-funding pension cost, we did that already. So that's in there. Priority-based budgeting has been included. Facilities and maintenance staffing deficiencies is in there. The township communication assessment, it's a one-time cost that's in there. The part-time wage scale recurring is in there. The one-time diversity, equity, and inclusion training was in there. There was additional clerk's office records position, some additional park staff. The economic development placeholder that was $100,000 allocated for three years is within there. Also, the township ERP placeholder has been worked into the budget. So some of these were in '23. Some of these were recurring, but I just wanted to comment that these have all been identified and worked into the budgets. The two that have not been put into the budget, specifically the corporation council position, there was a potential to create that extra one. That was not put into the budget. We were replacing that with the Canton Advocate position. That position was approved after this budget was created. So that will be an adjustment after, before the board actually adopts the budget. It was after this part was created, but before it's adopted. So it's not officially worked into the budget. So that will be an increase in costs in the budget. And then there was a placeholder for the municipal services department for some, an application they were looking to purchase that is on hold until we know what's happening with the ERP solution selected.
So the one, the one-time things that you have, are they from 2023?
2020, these are all from 2022. Nothing from the 2023 board retreat has been worked in.
Already done, right?
They're either done, or if they are recurring costs, they have been worked into the budget, other than these two. Yep. But the items from the 2023 board retreat have not yet been incorporated into the 2024 budget. Any questions on those? Okay, so I'm going to turn it over to the different directors to talk, and then I'm going to come back around. Devon Landers is here from IT. Unfortunately, Director Abigoo is out of the country. So Devon has graciously offered to come and present. So I'm going to help her out a little bit here, but Devon is the brains behind the operation today. Go easy on her. Actually, do you want to take that over to them? That's the, that's the, let me open up their presentation. The IT budget. What do you see? You still see my initial one? Hold on, stop, share. How come I can't see the? Where do you see the presentation to start it? There it is. Okay, so the IT budget is very similar to the previous year. I'm going to let Devon do most of the speaking to it, but just so you know, there's been no headcount increases in the IT's budget. The main highlights probably for IT and what Devon's going to cover are going to be the, really the priorities that are in there as far as the additional services and capital outlay. Historically, and I know this year's budget as well, has been items that have been identified by the board or items just to keep our business continuity flowing, you know, so we can keep the technology moving forward. So I'm going to turn it over to Devon. You know, if you need me to jump in, I'm happy to jump in. But Devon, I know, is prepared and will do a great job. So Devon?
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
So for this particular slide, I am going to discuss some of the things that Wendy has highlighted as far as the capital outlay and also the software support. So for 2024, we do see an increase for our capital outlay. And that is represented by the 40%, which is the larger of the pie. Our software support is comprised of our Adobe upgrades, also as well as Microsoft 365, our Barracuda email archive, our Firewall, Informer Cast, Vmware, DocuSign, Zoom, Esri, and SolarWinds. So that is the 18% of the pie. I will discuss the capital outlay on slide five. Other accounts includes our contingency, fleet cost, internet expenses, training, conferences, and supplies. So that is primarily what this pie represents. And also the professional services, which is the smallest of them all, represent our printer maintenance agreements, Civic Plus, phone system support, our server support, and networking support. So our 20, this slide represents a comparison with the previous year, 2022, as well as in the future, which is 2024. And we did sort of like a expenditure comparison and how that looks visually in the changes that are represented. The salary infringes, and Wendy touched on that, for 2023 is a direct result of our new director, Victor. That was the increase that is represented. For the professional services, 2023 includes adjustment for the Plant Moran ERP consulting services that we obtained this year. And then also for 2024, it will probably be an adjustment for the Civic optimized that was just approved by the board. Our software support also will be increased for 2024. We have, we're in the process of upgrading our firewall. And so with that upgrade, there are license costs. And so that is a representation for 2024, those additional licensing costs. Also, we've added DocuSign, which a few of the departments are utilizing. So that is an addition, as well as the Adobe upgrade. The capital outlay, again, I will present that in the next slide. Our other accounts, as you see, it's a huge jump in 2023, but that is represented by the earmark ERP, $1 million. And that project is currently underway. And it is reserved in contingency. So as far as the capital outlay goes, these are the projects that encompasses that, that particular line. We have quite a bit of projects in 2024. And I'll start first with the RICO upgrades. The RICO copiers are due for an upgrade. They are on a seven-year schedule cycle. So they are updated, upgraded every seven years. We do have some that have been added this year, but for the most part, we do try to keep that in a cycle. And so we are nearing the seven-year mark to do some of those upgrades. The Heritage Park Fiber Ring, that is a huge project. And again, I will touch on in the next slide. It will be better for me to show that rather than explain it here. We're also working on the Maraki Wi-Fi access point upgrades. That's within the admin building. We plan to replace and upgrade the existing access points. Wi-Fi on devices, laptops, phones, tablets, as it evolves, access points needs to be, they need to be upgraded and refreshed to keep current with the guests and the township equipment. So that is primarily for the Maraki. Network switch replacements, our current network equipment is end of life. And we, we will lose our support. Actually, the support ends in September of this year. And that's the support with our vendor. So we do plan to do replacements of those switches. We also have the UPS batteries. It is vital that we get those batteries replaced. They are also on a five-year battery replacement cycle. So that goes with the life cycle of some of the hardware. Next, we have our computer replacement for many workstations within the township. We typically replace the computers every four years. So those are also on a life cycle. This year, we'll be replacing around 40% of our fleet. So this, next year, it will, we'll have to replace more, but this is, accounts for those additional replacement computers. And they will be at four years by next year. So it's a four-year cycle. And then upgrade to our virtual environment. This is another vital aspect of our infrastructure within the township. It's how we access most of our files and our data and our applications. So on this slide, this is the representation, and I know it may be a little bit hard to see, but this is the representation of our virtual environment and the Fiber Ring projects. So for the virtual environment, we plan to upgrade our SAN hardware, upgrade our VM physical servers, and also replace our virtual host servers. Those are interdependent, so it is important that we update them all together. You can't buy the car and not have an engine. So that's essentially what this is. And you need the tires to drive the car. So essentially, these all work together. So they, they do need to be upgraded. Now, this could be contingent upon our ERP system because a lot of these, a lot of this virtual environment relies on our, our applications such as Esri, GIS, Tyler, CityView, and BSNA. And also for our SAN storage, which is those blue boxes. No, don't change. So the blue boxes represented there, is this the pointer? Okay. No point. So, so the SAN storage, they hold our drives. So like our G drive, H drive, K drive, N drive, and L drives. So the virtual environment is what we use on a day-to-day basis.
When you say virtual, when you say virtual environment, these are still housed here, or are they?
They are on premise.
They're, they're thought to migrate them to cloud eventually, or that's still not in the plan?
Yes, yes. So that is one of our initiatives. And that's why I said it may be contingent upon where we go within, in the next year or in the future, as far as our ERP goes.
Okay.
So our ERP will, hopefully, is mostly a SaaS solution, which means it's in the cloud. And we will, we will not have a need to have as much hardware on premise, because it will be hosted.
Okay, thanks.
And also, I want to talk about our Fiber Ring projects. The fiber that will run from at the admin building to public safety, to fire station one, then back to fleet, back to grounds, over to pheasant run, back to summit, and then back over to admin. So it's essentially a circle, a ring. And currently, the connection between summit and pheasant run is 30 years old. It runs off about a gig of, the speed is, is about one megabit per second. So the plan is to upgrade that to fiber. And then also, we would like to install a connection between pheasant run and grounds, and then grounds back to fleet. There is no connection there currently. And then we do have a connection between summit, public safety, and admin, and there will be no changes to that. So the proposed changes will be between summit and pheasant run and public safety, fire station one, and the fleet building. And then all, all the way back to grounds because there's currently no fiber there.
It's grounds. Just curious. When you say grounds, what does that mean?
Go ahead.
Is, is the parks maintenance building out back?
Oh, okay.
All right. I'll move on to the next slide. So I just want to keep in your view, the ITI initiatives that we are continuously working through as outlined in our 2024 budget, these are our overall goals to structure this budget. And they are specifically related to our network infrastructure, the ERP, and other hardware, and potentially software updates.
Sorry, could you go, could you go back to the slide about the Fiber Ring?
Yeah.
So currently, do all of those buildings house computers? It is, yeah.
Yes.
So the grounds building has computers in it?
Yes.
Right now, I think they're connecting back here through a Wi-Fi link without any sort of fiber connection. And it's a pretty weak link.
I'm just surprised there's a computer there. I'm thinking there's rakes.
And, and these are our initiatives. Again, Victor, he makes it a point to make sure that we are presented with this, and he has it on the board in his office. So these, this is something that we look at daily, but these are things to help our environment, not only within our building, but for the township as well. A part of those initiatives will be our cybersecurity analysis. Now, although this is not a part of the 2024 budget, I just want to present this to you as, as something that will be vital for us to take part in. And as per some of the recommendations from MMRMA, we do plan to tackle the cybersecurity analysis once resources are available. But having this analysis done will, will give us an idea of the health of our environment and how secure we are with a lot of attacks that are going on, not only, you know, with vendors and their software, but with government agencies.
And on that note, we just received an email from the state of Michigan's cybersecurity department. And they're, because we had sent a letter basically stating that we needed to protect all of our communities the same. So we've asked them to help the communities pay for these items because it does protect us all. So hopefully, we are getting somewhere with that finally.
I know it says costs will be provided once it becomes available, but do you have a range of like how much that typically costs?
Victor would definitely have that information.
Right now, I think our firewall costs $300,000 initially. Then I think there's $100,000 yearly to renew just the firewall part of that.
And if I recall correctly, I think there's grants available, wrap grants available through MMRMA to help cover this. I think there was a group that had come in from, because it may be the Department of Justice, that had come in to do an initial review of it, that had offered to come back in. So I believe they're still trying to look at the cost and grant and what, you know, what types of services we might be able to have included, just because we're a government through other entities.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And also as a side note, I know Victor mentioned he wants to wait until the implementation of the new firewall has been fully completed, so that we can test the new capabilities and make sure we're up to speed.
Yes, that's a vital point. Another one of our initiatives is the broadband initiative. This will be a part of our accomplishing the board goal of quality infrastructure and the advancement for our community. So the broadband initiative is a way for us to, we have to establish a working committee. And then also, we do need to develop a comprehensive township plan. So broadband is something that Victor is very passionate about, that he's going after. It's one of his, one of his top projects as well. This slide is primarily our software applications and our ERP replacement initiative. Although it has been begun this year, it will likely span for the next three years. Although it has been begun this year, it will likely span for the next three years, just with the implementation, um, training. So for some of the, the applications here that, that are represented here, um, the ones that are highlighted in red are, will be a part of that ERP, um, replacement initiative. The community development environment, which is CityView, BSNA, CityWorks, and then Tyler New World. These will be some of those applications that we can essentially alleviate from our monitoring and control and updating and, um, potentially get those hosted, um, in a cloud environment. I just want to let you guys know these are IT members. All these projects and initiatives that are going on, these are, um, the individuals that are working diligently, um, on these projects. And, uh, just wanted to point that out, um, as, um, although we don't have some of these initiatives budgeted for, um, these are things that we do plan to, um, accomplish, and that may require additional staffing. And any questions or concerns, Victor is your guy.
Thanks, Devin. Any questions for Devin? Okay, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Devin. Good job.
Thanks, Caitlin.
Um, all right, next up, we are going to have Municipal Services, Director Smith.
Uh, my first one to recognize, some of my staff that's here, Dave Norwood, obviously the deputy, Patrick Sloan, community planner, John Selmy, DPW manager, Bill Surcheck, township engineer, and Tom Gaffka's here from facilities. So, um, thank you for all their hard work. They put a lot of time and effort into the budget and, um, worked diligently every day to, to implement what we have here before you. This is an overall look at the staffing of MSD. We don't have any staffing changes proposed for 2000 and, or, yeah, 2024. There was an addition in 2022, uh, but that's, like Wendy said, already been baked into the, um, the, uh, the existing budget, so no staffing changes. I thought I'd throw this in there, this is some of our hardworking team. This isn't everybody, but this is some, so. Uh, this is our budget breakdown. I'm going to do this, so I don't have to keep looking up there. Our budget breakdown, the total MSD budget is just under $60 million. That sounds like a really big number because it is, but most of that is because of Public Works Water and Sewer. That makes up almost $35 million of the, of the 60 million, but the rest of it, um, you can see I've got that broken down there. So what I thought I'd do, I'm going to go through each division and kind of give some 2024 highlights and forecasting for each of them. Some has some historical information as well, um, and I'll just, I'll just kind of reiterate these, but stop me at any time and ask me questions. Building and development activity, we are definitely seeing a decline because of the market in new home building, and it's probably projected to stay that way through 2024, but we're going to be keeping a, you know, a very close eye on that so we can, um, can monitor that activity. And, um, and I'll keep you guys updated on, on that. In 2023, um, our clerical staff has started to be, they're going through a permit tech certification process. So all of the clerical staff, when you go to the building department, will be certified to assist the customers at the counter with their permit submissions, and they'll be actually be able to look for some things and do, do some things right there and verify those at the counter to expedite the customer service. And in addition, if you haven't been to the second floor, we've actually added two computers in the lobby, one at planning and one at building. They're both accessible for the residents to use for online applications. This is a historical graph that I like to show of the building revenue, um, just because you can see how the market, um, fluctuates over time. So back in 2010, you saw that expenses, um, were more than what the actual revenue was, and you can see the rapid, um, uh, incline and, and how, how much can actually grew over the course of the last 13 years. Uh, we're starting to see a little bit of dip in that. Obviously, the last two years are projections. Uh, we're in 2023 now, and then obviously forecasting 2024, so those are, those are just estimates at this point. But we're keeping an eye on that, obviously, like I said in the previous slide, and you can see that we've kept expenses even, um, for the last two years. In planning, um, planning staff, 100% of our planning staff is new since 2019. We've got over 40 years of experience, and we recently just welcomed Zach and is it Michaels?
Michelle's.
Michelle's. Um, he's our new associate planner. Single-family demand is slowing, but multifamily is still high in demand, and obviously the commercial activity is still, um, is not showing any signs of slowing down. We've got a few large developments in the pipeline. Redevelopment demand is high as well, and we're going to continue to see that as Canton continues to, to build out, and once we become a developed community, then clearly, uh, redevelopment's going to be what we'll be looking at. We continue to move towards the certification of the MEDC's Redevelopment Ready Community Program, and we'll continue to complete that work with the new economic development, uh, manager and DDA manager, um, and the goal is to be certified by 2024. Onto engineering, um, obviously, we, we are currently doing the sidewalk repair program. We kicked off the gap program last year. Um, we'll actually see some activity on that, and the, just, those two programs are, are pretty large, and it seems like the sidewalk repair program is getting larger every year, and complexity is increasing every year as well as the community ages. Roads, um, local roads, we, I believe the board just approved the 2024 projects two board meetings ago, but there'll be 18 subdivisions that are participating in 2024, and we already have people in subdivisions lined up for 2025 as well. Major road, um, projects for consideration in 2024 are Beck Road from Cherry Hill to Michigan Avenue and Geddes Road from Denton to Canton Center. And then obviously, we have our, uh, we recently talked about the intersection project, and those are two, that's to be determined. We don't have anything identified here because it's out for design, as the board recently approved that, and once we get those designs back, we'll be back before you to pin down which ones we want to do first and create that priority. Continue working on preventative maintenance with catch, uh, at the catch basin repairs and improvements, and, um, obviously, these projects are tentative, so we're not announcing anything, um, public. It is, I guess it is on our roads plan, so it'll be in there, but it is tentative, so, um, subject to change. Continuing with engineering, um, currently, uh, Bill and his staff are working with Leisure Services with Jeanette on creating a parking lot analysis, um, throughout the entire township for all the parks and township-owned properties, and then once we, um, complete that, we'll be having another study session to go over that with the board and present that with a recommendation, um, for the board's consideration. I do believe in the 2024 budget, and I'll, on a different slide, uh, when I get to capital, there is a placeholder in the 2024 budget, I believe of $275,000 to address parking lot improvements and repairs, and I believe that's going to occur every year in the budget in order for us to stay on top of those, uh, capital needs. Um, we're going to continue to conduct our onsite engineering inspections for all the developments that occur, and then, uh, engineering also assists with the annual water main, uh, replacement program. Onto facilities, um, we are still concentrating on the completion of the five-year CIP plan, which by 2024 should pretty much be wrapped up. It's been, it's a very busy year this year, um, completing those plans, but I believe in 2024, we should have everything completed from the 2019 to 2024 CIP plan that was approved, obviously, a few years ago. John and Tom have done a great job creating and implementing a preventative maintenance, um, procedure, um, and plan for the township. I don't think we've seen that many, um, preventative maintenance, maintenance measures taken on our heating and air conditioning units, um, just on the buildings itself, so I commend them for that. So we worked that into the budget to continue that maintenance into 2024 as well and beyond. And then we're working towards township-wide facility accreditation program, um, and then energy efficiency focus as well with, through the EV program, and then upgrading our mechanical equipment too, that does have a, um, an environmental impact.
Jade?
Yes.
The accreditation program, that's separate from your department accreditation?
Yes.
That has something to do with the facilities themselves?
Yeah, facilities is actually part of the APWA, um, certification that we have accreditation. The PW and APWA stands for Public Works, so it's really geared at public work activity. Facilities actually has its own type of accreditation too. There's various levels in different organizations that you can be accredited through, and I don't remember which one John was going to go with, I'm not sure if you do, Tom?
Uh, GBAC.
Do, I'm sorry?
GBAC, and it's about PM, safety, and cleanliness.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Uh, onto public works, um, water main replacements and expansions will continue as we do every year. Um, the projects we're looking for in 2024 are Nassau Court, Willard, and then the Lexington Square subdivision. Our sanitation contract expires in 2024, and as, as we sit here tonight, we are still waiting for, um, I have a typo, it's not GLF, it's GFL. Um, GFL's proposal to determine if we're, if, if we want to recommend to the board a renewal of that contract or go out to bid. That will be, we'll be having a lot of discussion on that coming up because that contract does expire a year from June. So if we do go out to bid and go with a new contractor, we're going to have to, there's a lot of prep work that that takes, um, when you're looking at switching haulers. So we'll have to make sure that we have a, a study session on that too, and open that up for consideration and see which way the board wants to go. And obviously, with that contract renewal too, a solid waste collection fee will probably have to be looked at as well once we get the, the proposal from GFL, and then also if we go out to bid, what that contract, uh, what that bid results are. One of the items that's been in the budget and in the works for quite a few years is the construction of a storage building to be completed in 2024. And then we've got sewer lining and manhole rehabilitation, which happens township-wide, and we will have the final results of our food compost pilot, which is happening in 2023. So then, beginning of 2024, we can actually analyze, um, all of the data and see which direction we want to go with that food, uh, composting program, if we want to make it a, a permanent program, and what we want that to look like. So there'll be more discussion on that too. So it was hard to budget for that because not knowing what that's going to look like in 2024. Fleet, um, fleet's seen a change in management this year. We have Kevin Clark, um, who is now the new fleet manager, he's doing a great job. He's developing a policy, actually, we have a meeting tomorrow to kind of formalize of the replacement, um, the fleet policy, which involves a replacement and then the EV transition too. So once we vet that through and have a draft, um, we will bring that to the board for consideration for adoption, um, and make sure that it meets all of the board's, um, needs. 75% of our fleet is new within the last 10 years, and I've got the 2024 purchases, um, listed here, which consists of six police hybrid explorers. I can say that we haven't even received the ones we ordered in 2022, so, um, but we're closely monitoring that and working with, with the, uh, the vendors. Um, a new fire rescue, uh, five new pickup trucks for CLS, which is definitely warranted. They had some vehicles that were 20 years old, um, in their fleet, uh, that, uh, need to be replaced. A new, uh, F-450 and a cargo van for DPW Water and Sewer, uh, two new inspection vehicles for building and inspection services, and a new vehicle for facilities. This is hard to read, and I'm assuming we're going to send all of the presentations to the board? Okay. So, and, and actually, it's in Wendy's as well. I took this one, I took some of the capital items out of this slide from her slide because either the ones that we're directly involved when, in from a facility standpoint, um, it doesn't benefit all facilities, it doesn't, doesn't directly benefit facilities as a division, but what our, um, our role in there is to help facilitate all of this across all of the different township departments and, um, buildings. So this is everything that we're involved in. Um, there's over $4.8 million worth of capital projects here that are being proposed, um, to be completed in 2024 that we would assist with. We do take, um, ownership of everything at the admin building, um, and at all of the, like, the historical museum, uh, Cherry Hill School, and the Human Services Building, but everything else is actually probably going to be covered in other departments' presentations as well. And I believe that's it, so I'm open up for any questions. I know that was a lot of information in a very short period of time, but I'm here to answer any questions.
All right, no, thanks. Good job. Thank you.
Director Stockline and Fire is up next.
All right, good evening. Good to see you guys, and girls. I've got my staff with me, Jamie Strazier, Deputy Chief, and Barb Caruso. She's a new operations manager as of this past year, so I know you guys voted on that when we, when we took that position forward, but, um, couldn't do it without her and Jamie as well, crucial in, um, everything that we, we put together here for you guys. But just getting into, um, some of the stuff that, um, you've heard before, um, we go through, um, very stringent process to bring things forward to the board. I just wanted to focus on this a little bit because you can see how we always move these through, and it goes through a lot of review. Um, we're going to focus on making sure, um, that we stay away from budget adjustments, um, moving forward because at the leadership level, we've had a lot of conversation about how that's very difficult for finance to deal with. Excuse me. So that's kind of our goal over the next year, two years, is to get back away from those budget adjustments and do everything that we can to, um, give them the tools that they need for, um, moving forward and not having to guess on every single budget as we go forward. So with that being said, uh, currently, this is our staffing levels, we're, uh, seven firefighters short and one fire inspector short. Um, I know we've had conversations, um, and we'll talk a little bit more for future considerations about, um, future staffing, um, but currently, um, we're working on that, um, filling positions. Luckily, um, we just did an interview today, and, and we may have one more position, we're going to give a job offer too, so we're working on that, moving forward in the right direction, um, as well as union negotiations coming up, um, this year, um, as well. So with that being said, we, we do have the new fire coordinator position that, um, we brought to the board a few weeks back, and, uh, that will be, um, interviewed tomorrow, so, um, Barb and Jamie will be sitting in on those interviews, um, so we have four candidates in that, and that will help our division tremendously when we, um, work on these, these projects. Um, it's really needed, um, for administrative side of things, um, to keep the department running, so we appreciate that support in creating that position in this past year. And then, other than, uh, future considerations for, um, staffing for a new station, um, we don't see any more job, um, openings for this year. Currently, uh, we just finished up, um, our SAFER grant, which was $1.8 million, I believe, um, so we just finished that up, um, got the notices back that everything looked good. Uh, Mike Shepard's been working on that, on those federal grants with us, and those always go well. Um, our AFG grant for the firefighter physicals, those, um, are wrapping up this year as well. We just finished that, it's about $150,000 worth of physicals that we got, um, through AFG. So that, once again, is something that was added into the budget for the following years because we want to continue that service for the firefighters, making because we want to continue that service for the firefighters, making sure that we continue to make sure that they're safe. Speaking of, we didn't know that at least two of those physicals caught stuff on firefighters, so it's already paid off in the funding that we received from the federal government. So we'd like to continue that, and that's in our budgets in the future. And we'll continue to apply for MMRMA, RAP grants, CAP grants. Those are minor things, but we pick those up in $3,000, $5,000 increments for accreditation, things like that. So you'll see, we've got a 7% increase in expenditures this year. 12% revenue increase, so we're staying in the right line. Wendy's been working some, Director Trumbull's been working some projections for us as well, and we'll be sharing those with you in the near future as we speak a little further. But I'm going to turn it over to Deputy Chief Strazner here to talk about the actual specifics on the increases.
Hello, good evening. On this slide, the first thing we're going to look at is a projected increase for salaries, wages, and overtime. That's a 12% increase for 2024. And then moving on from that, the fringe benefits that Director Trumbull had mentioned earlier and incorporated in the entire budget, we're looking at an 8% increase for fringe benefits, FICA pension increases and medical costs. Then moving on to supplies, there's a 10% increase, and this is aimed directly at ambulance supplies, which, as the run volume continues to increase for us, the ambulance supplies are going to continue to go as well. And then other services, the 9% increase is going to be attributed to our accreditation effort, which is really going to start ramping up in 2024. We're going to have a peer team come in, and then hopefully we'll be, not hopefully, we will be before a commission in 2025. So those are some of our expected increases. Some of our proposed budget capital requests are going to be the tablets for our trucks. We use those for patient care and contacting hospitals. And then capital outlay for buildings, we have a kitchen renovation planned for Fire Station 1, and that's really going to include, one of the big costs there is that hood vent included in that renovation. And that's something we do for transparency to, we make all entities in the township, if you have a commercial-style oven, have that hood suppression system. So we also mandate that for ourselves as well. So that's going to be quite costly, but it's good, it's going to keep the building safe. And then Station 3 is planned for a roof, and that building is, it's getting up there in years, for sure, much as Station 1 is as well. But the roof at Station 3, it's time for that to get replaced, and then there's just some general upkeep for outdoor painting, caulking for Fire Station 3. Thanks. And then moving on to capital outlay, machinery and equipment, tools and equipment for new apparatus, and then gas monitors, this is another big initiative for us. In light of some of our recent call volume, we're upgrading our gas monitors. Hose replacement, that's a standard annual replacement for us. And same thing with that aging infrastructure of Fire Station 3, same thing with Fire Station 1 and 3 for the restroom partitions. Those buildings are getting older and older, and those improvements need to get made. And then finally, the rescue unit, the $240,000 for the capital outlay on the vehicle. Currently, we have four 2016 ambulances, and a couple of those units are getting up their mileage up to almost 200,000 miles on a couple of them. So by the time 2024 comes along, we'll be ready to retire those ambulances and bring this one onboard, and that'll really help us with the call volume. And then finally, just our general budget breakdown. We have 50% of our budget going towards salaries, just 1% of it to the supplies. And as you can see on this slide, the salaries and the fringe benefits are the majority of it. And then we have 4% going for capital outlay.
So just to touch one more thing on the apparatus that we ordered, I've been speaking with the manufacturers, and luckily, we got into those orders on those rescue squads and those engines when we did, pulling those forward. There's an 8% increase just about every six months. And for example, those fire engines, the pumpers that we ordered were right around $550,000. They're now touching $850,000. So we ordered those at the right time, getting $300,000 roughly savings on each one of those. So it was good that we were able to move those forward and get those purchases done. But going with future considerations, you guys have heard this, you know, we're looking at retention and recruitment efforts. We're having that issue. As you know, their staffing's down. We've got negotiations coming up, so we know that that'll be some budget impacts as well. And then Fire Station 4, you know, we've put in for requests through the federal government as well to try and fund that station. And then we've got a five-year strategic plan that goes along with our accreditation that's coming up this year, so we're going to start working on that. And then, you know, like I said, we're going to try and stick to the plan and not go out with these budget adjustments. We know that some of these things may end up being some adjustments, but that's our plan. So if you guys have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them on the fire department side.
Just back on the ambulances, you said a few of them are from 2016 and are coming up, and so in this budget year, it'll be one that's replaced? And then are there others in the years around it?
Well, you guys graciously approved three ambulances two and a half years ago, and we've received those.
You're welcome.
Yeah. And we've received those this year.
Okay.
Or I'm sorry, late last year. So those are now in service. Well, actually, the last one will be put into service in the next week or two. And then we have an additional three that you guys agreed to purchase last year, so those are expected early next year. So those 16s are kind of going to be stuck into the back as reserve reserves, and hopefully that'll kind of, you know, mend the fence when we have another station and we can hold on to those and not have to purchase a lot more capital when that goes.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
Yep.
Thanks.
All right. We'll move into emergency management here. Will Hayes is our emergency manager. I'm sure that you guys probably all know him as the weatherman. So he sends out the weather all the time, and we've got quite a few today, so be careful tonight with all these tornado warnings and stuff that are coming out. But he's kind of a one-man show, runs everything over there, and he's really crucial for both police and fire. He does a lot of behind-the-scenes stuff that nobody even knows about, whether it's, you know, ops plans for Liberty Fest or for the high school or whatever event may be going on. He runs a lot of those things, and he falls underneath Director Ball and myself. But the money comes out of general fund and then is reimbursed through grant. 23 to 24 is not a big increase, 10%. This is a very small budget, no capital, and really, the only expenses is coming down to salaries, which you can see in this, that's 7%. Little bit of supplies here and there, but all in all, this is under a $90,000 budget. So at the end of the day, we couldn't do it without him. He's really crucial for us, and he continues to show each and every day that he's needed and that that is a great program for us to have. So I'm happy to take any questions on emergency management if you have them.
I know Chad had just stepped out of the room, but you had, we had talked earlier about a grant because MDHSS has come to us about the Sheldon Road School, and we have done COVID testing there. And, okay, from Chad back in the room. So Will is asking us, you know, what do we want to tell the county or MDHSS what we would like, you know, further funding for, whether it be mental health services or opioid addictions or, you know, early childhood intervention or something like that. And from what Chad, you had said earlier, I believe, we know that we're having, you know, we're seeing a lot more mental illness out there and overdoses. So we're trying to think about this grant that Will had brought to us from MDHSS that they're asking about.
I think it's important to consider as a township where we move as it relates to local community health, what we're doing as a police department and as a public safety department with our embedded condition program. If we have an entity which we're funding actually supports behavioral health and to a minor degree substance abuse issues, I think it's an opportunity to address it with Michigan Health and Human Services. If they want to come in our community and be present in our community beyond COVID, that's a need our community probably needs support in. Because it's funded already in the state of Michigan, the allocation of resources are at issue. So just, I don't know if that'll be a part of the survey, but if they're asking, that's my response for my small segment of...
One question is, what other services would you like? And that's basically what we have to think about what we need.
Department's in the state of Michigan, and so when it comes to health in the state of Michigan, I think they have an opportunity, if they really want to address health in this community, it's, there's your shot. You know, that's a hole in the system.
Oh, is it? I guess the questions that I had seen come back to me are, is this just a grant or are they going to supply actual people there that are working with us on those issues?
I think it would be based on the feedback they get and what they can, how they can respond and where their budget is. I know a lot of the money is allocated already with DEWIM, so how are those folks going to interact together would be my question.
I mean, as a board, you know, what do we think, based on what Chad is saying, that we should look at mental health services or something? Just put that commentary in there, and then they would decide how they would support us.
When do you have to let them know?
We have to let them know by April 15.
April 12, I believe.
April 12.
I think it's important, if you, if there's something that you want, to make sure that you mention it in there so that we can actually get it on the paperwork for the funding. It doesn't necessarily mean we'll get it, but if there's something that's important to you, make sure it's on there.
Okay. So I agree. I think that's very important. I would add to that, that I think that there's a need for services for families that have ill family members, you know, respite help or mental health support for those families where the caregivers need help.
Okay.
I 100% agree with that.
Okay. Okay.
And also, I think if it becomes a big program, there's a, going to be a reliance on the fire department for a lot of transports, depending how big that program was, would develop into, so.
I mean, the bottom line is, is we have the ability to transport and take these patients to the bottom, behind the scenes, there's not much of a system to support that, right? We can take them to all the treatment centers we want, we can take them to all the hospitals, but if the system falls apart behind that, we end up picking them up again and again and again, right? So it has to be a system that can support our efforts as well. And I'm not saying that's a township's responsibility, but it's certainly something that we can ask the, you know, health department to do.
Definitely, but I think that some of that is because the families need support.
So is that, so are they asking us, like, this grant request that we are making, this is for us to implement, or are they going to come here and do something?
That we don't know yet. They're just asking us what we think we need.
Okay.
And then I assume they'll make, you know, offers later, see what they come up with. Like, so Sheldon Road School has been used for vaccinations at first, and then it went to testing. And they asked to stay here because our counts were so high in Canton. And so now they're doing this follow-up because they keep extending staying there because they're getting a lot of people coming in. So they're extending, and they're asking us now, what else do we need to help with? All right.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, Director Ball?
Thanks for having me, please, once again. I have Captain Joe Bailey, if some of you don't know him, and maybe some of the folks that could be watching at some point. Is there any Captain? He's been with us nearly 19 years, I believe, and he was five years in Detroit prior. So he's been with us a long time. Barb Crusoe, and she's ever been in this team, but she's critical to the operations of the police department, and I think it's also...
Important to realize her role in this renovation project. She's...
That's why I couldn't hear. The microphone was off.
I was like, is it me?
What is going on?
We're all done now. One of my best presentations.
We're going to have to do your stuff over again.
But anyway, back to the point, Barb's been critical in making this happen. I know Chris, you know, with his background, it's been essential, too, but Barb's our day-to-day operations in making that happen. I think you'll be impressed when you see it. With that, we're going to get started. The budget process, much like you saw with the fire department, maybe I'll click the button here, there is a strong process of how things work in the police department. It goes through many levels of supervision, ultimately landing with the captain and myself before it goes to the finance director and the township supervisor and on to your review for approval. When you look at our budgeting for staffing, just keep in mind the comparison on a slide that's coming up, but our command staff, including myself, has 20 command officers, and currently we have 80 police officers with 13 vacancies. These are sworn police officers. Difference between non-sworn and sworn, police officers can make arrests. In comparison, you'll see a slide later down the road, but we have 20 command officers. Comparison to an agency very similar to us in La Bona, they have around 35 to 37 command officers and around 140 police officers. On the non-sworn personnel, we have our operation manager, which is Barb. She, we pay 70% of the salary, and Chris and I really utilize all the services that she provides, and we split the salary 70/30. She does a lot of work for the police. We have two IT and dispatch supervisors. We also split that with the fire department. We have a crime analyst. Of the 18 dispatchers, we split those equally currently. Nine of those come out of our budget, and nine come out of the fire budget. Three ordinance officers, we have a total of five ordinance officers in the township. The building department pays for one, and the fire department pays for the other one. So there's five total under supervision of mostly the police and the building department. We have five secretary clerk fours with one vacancy, five clerk threes, and the public, the part-time public safety aides, we have 11 of those, and those are real critical to what we're doing in our police department as we look at succession planning and staffing. And I'll have Joe speak to that in a little bit, but it's a little preview to how we look at filling the ranks of the police department. The next slide, just stop me at any point if you have any questions, but is the comparative analysis with other agencies. Ann Arbor, they came back with some of their numbers, but some of these folks didn't provide their numbers in time. I do have some ideas what some of these numbers are, but you can see what we pay per capita per police officer in comparison to some of the other communities. We're one of the biggest agencies now in Wayne County when it comes to population, municipalities, I should say, and we're ranking right behind Dearborn. Next slide talks about alternative funding. Forfeiture funds have been helpful along the way when refunding programs like the K-9 program. Expenses along with K-9 program, the security access equipment, some of the speed trailers, radar units, laptop computers, workstation furniture, and some of our handguns. Also, we apply for some grants out there, the Justice Assistance Grant. We've worked with our new grant writer many times over and out. We've failed many times over, too, trying to find alternative funds when it comes to the embedded social worker and staffing our police department. When you look at our budget, the 24 to 23 budget, the increase increases here excluding capital, you'll see a 2% increase with a revenue increase of 10%. The next slide talks about a classification that's over a 5% increase in what's really been growing, and I know I've talked to, spoken with Wendy and her staff over the years, how this continues to grow. These types of services are the contributing factors. When we start looking at, you know, paying for a grant... When we start looking at, you know, paying for a grant writer, a social worker program, some of the data services, prisoner food, recruiting supplies, succession planning with the conferences, one particular conference is the Michigan Association, the Chiefs of Police. I haven't been in a number of years, but getting our, our new command staff acclimated in, in that environment where they are building a lot of partnerships, we've really upped that in that arena. We have the indirect costs that we've spoken about many times over with this board. It's for us to receive the services that our township provides not only to the residents, but also internally. Some of the capital outlay requests include a Birla system. No one here is going to know what that means besides Joe and I, so I might as well explain it real quick. A Birla system would be a, a system that we use to help solve a, a recent murder. But it has to do with a, taking the, the cell phone and technology in the car and creating a timeline to recreate the events and help us understand what in that case the defendant was involved in. So that was critical for the case presentation. We're looking at how we can utilize that in our department. It's helpful. A lot of things that used to be technology wants are becoming technology needs and requests of the prosecutor and our citizens because they see it on TV. And these things are becoming the wave of the future. Technology and police are becoming very much intertwined. Also, you'll see the, they're pretty self-explanatory from there. Laptop replacements, printer replacements, same for inside the car, the physical server upgrade. If you have any questions about that, Barb, maybe you could ask, answer the.
Victor. We'll email Victor.
Victor's not here, but that's to support some of the, the standards of our township and really, as it really, the IT has increased. So to make sure we're in compliance with that, that's going to be an upgrade we'll have to make. And one of the things that I've noticed in my twenty-seven years here, we have the, one of the dirtiest showers ever, ever built and made and maintained. And it's not because of facilities, it's just, it needs an upgrade. Because they're, they do a great job of trying to keep it clean, but we need an upgrade in that shower. So that is what it is. Some of the proposed budget as it relates to the capital request. The generator, we often have a lot of struggles and facilities and Jade's team do a great job just getting us along. But in the twenty-four budget, we have the generator, a heat AC at the gun range. Tasers, that's an ongoing item. Every five years we have to replace these tasers. So that's always out there. And also the seven hybrid patrol vehicles. So when you look at the budget breakdown, the twenty-four proposed police budget breakdown, you can see the indirect costs, six percent wages are at forty-six percent. Supplies are only at one percent, capital purchases, two fringes, OPEB taxes, thirty-four percent, transfers out is one percent. We have ten percent in other services. If you have any questions about that, maybe Barb can jump in, but that's how that breakdown plays out for the police budget. Some things that are developing, some items that are developing are staffing levels. We never spent so much time and conversation on staffing levels, recruiting and retention. And just because it's such an important topic and you recently looked at it in this year's budget, I'll let Joe talk about some of the things we're doing on the recruiting end as it relates to retention and some of the firms and that type of conversation. If you would.
Yeah, we've seen a transition in the organization with people leaving. So some of it's through attrition, some of it's just through retirement. So we've really focused on recruiting and retention and trying to take a different approach to recruiting. We're trying to speak to a younger generation. I've kind of jokingly said before, if we're looking for forty-five-year-old white males, then we're doing a really good job. But that's not what we're looking for. That's not the direction that we want to go. And so in order to be able to do that, we kind of have to tap into a different section of society that, that I don't know much, which is really the technology section. And so we've interviewed a couple of different companies nationwide to try and get more into social media, to try and target more of what audience that we want. Facebook is, is great, but Facebook speaks to a different generation. And so that is an area of growth for me. I'm not very tech savvy when it comes to a lot of those things, so I rely on some of the subject matter experts to be able to do that. And as with anything else, there's costs that's associated with that. And so that's really been our direction for the past couple of years. But now as technology again begins to evolve, we're really kind of focused in more and kind of doing some more out-of-the-box things that are more non-traditional for our organization.
So you recently went to Plymouth Canton School's career night. How did that go? I mean, what are you finding when the kids come up to the table or what do you see?
So that's, that's where our PSA program has really, it's just been a rock star for us is that, that public safety aid program is able to take somebody in that's just out of high school and be able to get them into the organization and try and find out if this is truly the profession that they want to be able to be in. And that's where we've had a lot of growth. We just interviewed yesterday three PSAs. We have another interview tomorrow to try and transition over to police officers. They've been with our department for a little bit of time. And so again, that, that, the PCP hiring is, is really where we're trying to focus on the younger generation, trying to speak to them. We're looking at doing a virtual open house for our department as opposed to a physical. Again, to try and get on that platform and be able to reach out to them.
Who's leading that effort then? Is that going through Rochelle or HR?
We're working with HR, Lieutenant Johnson, who's our special services lieutenant, has been, been working very hard on that.
Should try the same for fire department also.
Yeah, we're open to anything. We're open to any new ideas.
Thanks, Joe. Again, developing items of interest, parking lot improvements. If we ever can find the space, you know, some of the forfeiture funding that we have, we could do a fitness center. There's an area of consideration in the basement if we can ever go to more of a paperless system with our records. It'd be a light cost in comparison to building something. So that's the, the path we would take if we can get some of our paperwork online or in a cloud somewhere. Some of those are mandated requirements to maintain, so that's why we're maintaining so much paper. Ongoing education and training and looking at this year or for next year is the five-year strategic plan. So, so some items that are coming through. Any questions for police before we go on to our E-911 budget? Please.
I know, Chad, you and I, or you, you mentioned possibly finding grant funding to continue the social worker program. Is that not included in your twenty-twenty-four budget because of?
Right. We're going to have a committee. I think we'll look at some opportunities there, whether it's figure or otherwise. Continue the clinician program, just how we get there. I think there's a lot of funding opportunities that are out there. I don't know how interested or what Michigan Health and Human Services really realized what they asked because I think they're going to get plenty of feedback. So I'm hoping that is another option. But, you know, with our current budget, I think we can continue to support the, you know, the one position easily.
Yeah, I heard that there are some grant opportunities and I can ask around as well.
Move it. I should probably catch this up. So with the E-911 proposed budget overview, looking at this to give a little historical perspective, the local surcharges are collected off your phone bills for nine-one-one service. The funds are distributed based on the community census populations. There's restricted use for the items, so it has to do with the line, the communication line. So the call taker salaries are okay. Phones, radio, dispatch equipment, some furniture is okay to use that, that money to offset those costs for the township. I know Finance Director Wendy's helped us out over the years of really earmarking funding so we can support a renovation project in our dispatch center, using it as a way to make sure we can offset the costs when you see the funding levels change over the years with our police departments and fire departments to offset the dispatch costs. Estimated revenue for twenty-four is four hundred and seventy thousand. And if there's any questions on that, just let me know. Moving on to the, the increases in, for capital, you're looking at a six percent, I'm sorry, increase in expenses of six percent, which excludes capital, and the revenues increase four percent. Some of the contributing factors for the increase of over three percent was the dispatch console annual support, which is a good investment because it's expensive, sorry, expensive equipment and the dispatch equipment repair. So those really hit us a little bit and caused the increase of seven percent, which was only nine thousand dollars overall. The capital outlay with computers at fifty thousand dollars, so that'd be a request for twenty-twenty-four. Some items of interest around this is how we staff our dispatch center. I know our dispatch, I believe we've had eighteen public safety service officers since the early two thousands. Since then, and you'll hear this more in a study session, but the demand has changed. The requirements, both the police and fire have changed on our, our employees in there. On the police side, I can speak to they, they really act like crime analysts themselves. They'll very rarely see the interaction and other agencies of dispatch playing a role using technology to solve the issue at hand for the police. I know the fire department increased over the years their service level or the mandates for the dispatch when it comes to how they dispatch fire runs, when it comes to EMS. So that's, that's coming. Security infrastructure is always an issue. Parking lot enhancements are coming, so we have the radio tower and emergency generator to consider. And I believe that's it for E-91. If there's any questions. Thank you.
I just wanted to add one thing that will be coming forth before the board. I'm not sure where the conversation's led, but we do have that opioid settlement funds that are coming that are very restricted and what we can utilize those for.
Right.
Social worker is something that that can be utilized for and we're expecting to get one point eight million over the next twenty years or so. Eighteen years. That's a potential.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank Carolyn for reminding me of that.
Thank you for catching that.
Thank you. Hey, we just signed those papers today.
All right, next up, last but not least, leisure services.
Need a break, need to stretch or anything? Feeling good, ready to go? That's for last, sorry. They've been razzing me today about how long I was going to take and so I've been timing everybody. So I will not be last. I guarantee that. I'm going to work on that. But I was thinking about that and I'm actually presenting for two people, so I think I get double the time. But I don't need it, so that's a bonus. I guess I should get some credit for that. All right. So yeah, so I will be presenting the entire CLS budget tonight on behalf of my cohort, Greg Holmberger, who's still out recovering and hopefully we'll be, we'll be back in a couple of weeks. Talked to him today. He's doing very well. Tonight, I've got here with me Jeanette, Jeanette Ialo. She is our project and operation supervisor, a recent promotion. She has helped us with this budget for years and years and has sat here with us for a long time and did so much of the work behind us. I appreciate all that she's done with it. And if you have any questions, I'm going to defer to her because she'll probably know the answer and I probably won't. So that's all right. And then I couldn't also, I don't want to move on without crediting Peg Stevens, who also helped with the PowerPoint and all the beautiful photos you'll see throughout the presentation. I just wanted to start off, you know, since we're talking about the twenty-four budget, we're moving forward, right? We're kind of going into a new department of leisure services and community development. So I won't be covering all of these funds tonight, but I wanted to show the many different funds that are within, will be within our budget. You can see there's a lot. So if I do take a little bit longer, you'll understand why. There's a lot of different funds to cover. But again, just kind of an overview snapshot of, of everything that we have and we'll kind of go in order here by, by fund with some of these and then I've summarized a few of them together. So first up is our Club Fifty-Five, which is our senior program, of course. Many of you are very familiar with it. Jenny Glasgow and her team are really focused on offering services. We were talking about her earlier. Just has a great heart for seniors and, and providing all the different things that have been required. There's been a lot of effects out of the pandemic, a lot of social isolation, a lot of services needed. And she's really come in and helped provide a lot of those services. So she's, she's doing a great job here on her team. We've seen a significant growth in the boomer demographic here in Canton, of course, which has really shifted our focus to a health and wellness, you know, type of activity. There's, there's a huge demand now for health and wellness type, type activities. I know the supervisor mentioned, I think a couple of you were at the summit and saw our sit-in fit class. It's gotten so large that we had to move it to the ballroom, so I think that's going to be a trend. And that's a class that's been popular for a long time, so definitely going to be a focus for us moving forward. Looking at the slide, really the only thing, change in the budget here is just from a reduced wages and fringes and that's just from changing our senior specialists. So it's actually a reduction because of that. Next up is our parks. We all love our parks, right? The first thing I kind of wanted to point out is there's a, a report that's put out every year. It's an outdoor participation report and it's a study. And that study showed that there's been a one thousand percent increase of outdoor activity since the pandemic started, which we all knew, that's not a surprise to a lot of us. But the anticipated increase of that was fifteen percent prior to the pandemic. So we went from fifteen percent to a thousand percent and we definitely saw that here. We just continue to see the demand in our Canton parks certainly increased. And, you know, that's, it's, I'd just say it's important for us to continue investing in those parks. Canton's growth as a community has always kind of, right, we've always identified with, with Canton's great parks and neighborhoods. And I just, it's, it's going to continue to be that way and it's, it's really, I always say it's what sets us apart from all of our neighboring communities. We continue to have some ongoing challenges. I just want to, with the staffing, I know we've added a couple. We're still, we're working on that. We're hoping our seasonal hiring will get us closer to where we've been in the past, but we are still very well short. We've deferred a lot of capital assets, I know, throughout the department, throughout the township. And so you see kind of the list there of some of the things that we're adding. A lot of it's some catch-up stuff. The only notable thing I wanted to mention on this slide is the very last one. I know Wendy mentioned earlier that this doesn't include any of the things that the board's been talking about lately. And so before you say, well, there's no money for, you know, any kind of park development. I know that's in conversation, so that would not, that's not currently in the twenty-four budget as of today. Moving on to our sports division, we are gearing up here for opening day coming up very shortly. And we're very excited for all that, that's to bring and we'll see activity all around town. We continue to see a demand here, especially on the youth tournament side. If you go down to Canton Sports Center any weekend from one or two from now, I think we open in two weekends with the tournament. All the way until October, there's going to be one happening on a weekend. So it's great. We continue to see that, which has allowed us to increase our, our fees and our, our revenue there. So that's one of the, kind of the more significant changes there is just bumping up our revenues to try to keep up with that demand. We're always looking to add new users to our parks and to the sports center. We're seeing a lot of different type of activity, especially lacrosse, not just locally, but nationally. Lacrosse has really taken off. We're seeing that here too. Cricket leagues, we have three different cricket leagues that we're helping to support and run, including a youth aspect, which is really cool. And of course, we all know pickleball is, pickleball is everywhere. So we continue to see a lot of new activities popping up and, and asking for use of our fields. Really, yeah, the slide is itself, so it's, capitalist is just a lot of catch-up, mostly down at the sports center. So next up is recreation. Everybody loves our recreation division. They, they do a lot of great stuff. Recreation became extremely versatile in the pandemic, which is kind of cool. We're still seeing, I, I say a lot of good things came out of the pandemic for us as a society. One of those was how we do special events and we've kept that. There's, we've seen, what we try to do now is a lot of our special events offer pre-registration, which we have found offers a much better experience for our guests, right, our participants. It's smaller. There's not thousands of people in a small space. People, you know, like that better. It allows the staff to plan for things for a controlled number. So we've learned that we can do a lot better job programming that way and so we've kind of carried that forward. And so we just continue to do that to make our, our residents feel comfortable coming to our programs. We saw the Return of Liberty Festival, of course, last year, huge success. We used, did a Cobalt study. I think we've shared that with most of you. It, it's a use of cell phone data to see how many people actually come to the festival. And we had over seventy thousand unique individuals. And that doesn't count people who don't have cell phones on them like kids, right? So that's a lot of people and that was just unique visitors. It didn't catch, we captured, it doesn't include repeat. So it really validated a lot of things that we thought were happening. And then, of course, the Liberty Fest, we were able to incorporate Canton Township's first Juneteenth celebration. So big success. We hope to make that a tradition. So big success, we hope to make that a tradition and continue that moving forward. So that was a great add for us. One of the many ways, like the Juneteenth celebration, that the rec division continues to serve the community is through our DEI programming. The board allocated funds for that, and we are definitely maximizing every cent of those funds every year to do that. The block and the therapeutic rec programs both continue to be very well received. You know, huge demand on those, however, some of our staff shortages have kind of kept us from being able to maximize those. We operated about fifty percent last summer, and we're hoping our seasonal hiring going on now will, will help us get back to those levels for this summer and then carry into the fall. We've been struggling a little bit on that. Kate?
Just wanted you to mention the, the Culture City accreditation that you've been doing?
Yeah, so we threw some staff initiatives. There's a, Culture City is a, is a sensory-inclusive effort that when we kind of learned about it and embarked on it, the only facility in Michigan at the time that had been certified was LCA, Little Caesars Arena downtown when they first opened. And what that means is, so we have equipped each one of our facilities with a few things to help people who are having some challenges maybe with just sensory, sensory challenges. We've got kind of these sensory kits located at each of our front desks. So if somebody is looking for headphones to kind of help block out noise, we've got fidgets and some gadgets, we've got blankets, we've got different textures. So there's a kit at each facility that anybody can check out and, and utilize. In addition to that, we've got signs throughout our facilities that show quiet areas or designate quiet areas, so that if somebody does need to kind of check out for a minute, you know, we have designated, designated areas at each of our facilities for that. So it's really a cool program. We recently just added the Village Arts Warehouse to that. So kind of part of Kevin joining us and the Partnership for the Arts, we've added that facility as well.
I think it's really understated how many people have sensory processing challenges. And even my six-year-old, he has gone to dances, and if I, he wants to leave as soon as we get there. He wants to dance, he wants to be there, but it's just too loud, it's too much. But the second I put headphones on him, he's cool. And so we're really trying to do that throughout all our facilities. And at some of our outdoor events, we're putting up tents where there might be spaces where it's quiet areas so that people can go and have a little bit of respite, a little time away, and be able to be at our outdoor events, indoor spaces, and have safe spaces where they feel comfortable that they can all thrive.
This was the first chart that I saw that had an increase in expenses on, on this. Is that more programming or just the cost of the program?
Glad you asked, that was the next point. So on this table here, the reason for the, the main, the primary reason for the expense and the operating, the increase in operating expenses is from our Western Wayne County Therapeutic Correct Grant. So in twenty-three, when we knew we'd received it, we increased the revenue for those funds, but we didn't add any expenses at the time. The thought was kind of we would use it to offset some of our subsidy with that program. Kind of shifted gears, and because of the demand, we wanted to grow that program. So what you're seeing in the twenty-four budget is we actually built in a hundred fifty thousand worth of expenses. So of the hundred, I think it's about a hundred and eighty thousand dollar increase on the expense side, a hundred and fifty of that is from just matching the revenue that was put in for twenty-three and four from the Wayne County dollars. The other thirty is some wages, but then also there is some dollars increased to kind of help with some of the newer efforts with the community development side. Recreation's that, that area, when there's a new event or somebody wants to partner with us, that's the team we pull in to help do the event. We started the DiVale Celebration a couple of years ago. So it's like an example of, you know, funds that weren't budgeted, but we use some of the DEI allocation. And then we've kind of got some funds baked in here to, to help take advantage of opportunities. But most of that is the TR funds. I should note too, I want to make, mention, in addition to the hundred fifty thousand from Western Wayne County, we also got seventy-five thousand from Detroit Wayne Mental, Mental Health, basically, and Integrated Health Network. That's not in here yet, they're approving that at their meeting this month in April. So that seventy-five thousand dollars could be utilized, depending on how we use it, to help offset some of that subsidy. So that's yet to be accounted for in here.
All right.
Next up is the Village Theater. The Village Theater was really the last facility of ours to come back online, you know, after the pandemic, for a lot of good reasons, right? People were kind of hesitant to be in a enclosed space. So however, that has not stopped them from making a full return. The facility, the demand for the dates at that facility have never, you know, are kind of right back to where they were. We're booking, we're now booked up until, we're looking at dates late next year already at the theater. So very popular, they're, they're hitting on all cylinders right now. The cool thing about the theater is that's at the heart of Cherry Hill Village, right? And we've got all these great initiatives and development happening out there. I think that vision that was originally part of the theater when it was built is gonna be realized here with all of the things that, things that are happening around it. The other cool thing, through the partnership, with the Partnership for the Arts and having Kevin Ryan come on as our programmer, the theater staff and the, and Kevin have already hit it, like, we're already starting to see the fruits of that with the kind of the cross-programming and working together on that. We've got art installations at both facilities, and artists come over there. I know several of you attend those regularly, so it's pretty cool. We're already seeing the fruits of that. As far as the budget goes, the theater budget's pretty much staying, staying flat outside of the capital, and there's some capital items up there on the list. That building is also coming up on twenty years old, hard to believe, I think, for a lot of us. But, you know, there's some normal wear and tear on that facility, so we'll have to start knocking some of those things out. I mentioned, so these are just the other general fund accounts that we have. Historic cemeteries is, Parks Maintenance does a lot on those, just cleanup and tree removal and tree, yeah, cleaning, you know, fallen trees and things like that. Social Services is our Growth Works allocation. Senior Alliance, we have some funds in there for that. And then the biggest part of that is transportation, our Ninkin Transit, provides our transportation. That's out of that, that social services budget. And then the CLS admin account is most of our salary, our administrative salaries, and fringes, benefits, all that good stuff. Notable increase in there, we've got our community survey budgeted for two thousand twenty-four. We're, we're back there again, so that's in there. And we also have some tablets built in for some staff efficiencies in the field to do some reporting, equipment inspections, things like that, incident reports. So that's in there as well. Here's a overall look at the general fund. Again, small increase in operating expenses, mostly resulting from the wages and then that, the Western Wayne County TR funding. And then the summit, so that's all of our general funds, so kind of shifting into the summit fund. The summit is certainly recovering, it's booming, lots of activity. We have been tracking usage of the facility and daily visits and things like that. And we are right between eighty-five and ninety percent of our pre-pandemic averages, which we were at our peak at that time since the summit opened. So we're, we're definitely getting back there. We've seen a huge surge in fitness class attendances. We're up four thousand already this quarter, over last year's quarter, year-to-date. We've had thirteen thousand attendances already in three months for attendance classes. We've sold five hundred more memberships this year than we did last at this time, and we've got about thirteen thousand membership visits already this year. So that doesn't include another two thousand in daily visits that we've received. And we're seeing big increases in kids' corner and then birthday parties. There's a, apparently there's a huge pent-up demand for, for people that couldn't have birthday parties for a few years. So I think people are trying to make up for it, because every weekend, we've got five to eight of them at the summit booked. So that's been great. And then aquatic staff, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention, we're up to fifty-six aquatic staff, which is the highest we've been in a long, long time, which is great. We were a little lagging on our swim lessons because of our staffing levels, and we're, you know, lifeguards are great, but then you gotta train them to be swim instructors, so we're slowly doing that. And we're kind of, we're getting there, we're up to a hundred and eighty-five spots per session, which is nowhere near where we had been at our peak, back when Jeanette was an aquatics specialist. But we've got a ways to go, but we're getting there. And we've got this little thing coming up called the Tile Project that's gonna close the pool, which I'll talk about in a second, but, so we gotta, we gotta weather the storm there. Two thousand twenty-three has seen a lot of reinvestment with the CIP, so you've seen a lot of work going on at the summit. The banquet got a refresher, so the walls are repainted, the, you know, surfaces are looking better in the banquet in. And the restrooms got a refresh, and actually, all of the restrooms and locker rooms will be getting a refresh this year before the year's out. So we got ceiling tiles throughout, which really brightened the place up. And I mentioned the Aquatic Center Tile Project, that Aquatic Center's gonna be closed beginning of August until the beginning of December. So it's gonna be a big hit. We're working really as a whole township now with all the departments to try to find ways to keep our staff engaged so that when we reopen in December, we'll still have lifeguards and get back to that number. And so we've got kind of a lot of efforts going on there, and we've, right now, we're working with those employees to find out where their interests may be in other areas. So we're gonna do everything we can to maintain them. And then you'll also see, come of the first of May, some educational things for our guests about the pool closure, including some alternatives of where they can go to swim, working with a few other neighboring communities to do that. So you'll, you'll be hearing that within the next month of, of some of those things. But we look forward to opening a aquatic center in December that has a nice new look to it, and hopefully we can hit the ground running and get those swim lessons going again. As far as the numbers go, really, some conservative revenue estimates there just because of aquatics. The rentals haven't really started back yet, we're still kind of looking to staff those needs to, to get that revenue there. But so even though we feel optimistic about those, we were, stayed conservative, which doesn't, it did result in kind of an increased subsidy there with the summit budget. And of course, our cable division, right? Everybody loves cable, and I'm not just saying that because Trevor's in the back room, but, but we do. Cable does a great job for us, right? And they, they really help, you know, continue to serve and help us all put our best foot forward. They continue to provide some of the same traditional services that they always have, but there's been a large shift to content development, which we utilize on our social media, websites, right? A lot of you get different clips to, to use for different things, so they've really shifted gear there. And of course, they provide our YouTube channels for us and make a lot of this stuff available to everybody. They're always stepping up to help other divisions, even when it's not really their area. They never say that's not us. They help with things like, you know, different technology needs. And so, and while it's not a budget impact, I wanted to mention too that Dave Harris and his team have stepped up in a big way to help us out with joining forces with the theater staff to help run that, that facility, the day-to-day operations. We shifted Dave's responsibilities to include the theater a couple of years ago, and we took that off of recreation. The recreation supervisor used to be about a fifty-fifty between recreation and the theater. So it really allowed us to grow a lot of our programs. And Dave has taken it in stride, and actually having the cable staff be backups and actually assist with the audio and lighting at the theater has been a dream. So it's been a great, a great thing. Like I said, it's not reflected in the budget, but it's been a huge help, I know, especially for, for me and for the department. As far as the slide goes, the only change in cable, I want to mention it because you're gonna continue to see this. There was a reduction, there's a seventy thousand dollar reduction on there in royalties. We're gonna continue to see that. Less and less of those funds are gonna come in as people switch to streaming services. So that'll continue to be something, you know, that the general fund will have to kind of help with, or we'll have to shift the way we think about cable or help refund that. So I wanted to put that out there for your, kind of just your attention. And then lastly, almost lastly, we have golf. It's been a, everybody knows it's been a great couple of years for golf. But for both courses, Fellows Creek continues to see increased revenues, and those continue to outpace the increased expenses, so that's good. So far, Fellows Creek was telling me that they've increased the number of memberships to the point where they have a waitlist, despite price increases across the board. So they're feeling really good about that. We continue to see a huge demand for outings more than ever, and they mentioned that they, they basically are planning to reach a new high level in their revenue related to outings this year, so. There's lots of capital at both golf courses, there are a lot to maintain, they're both aging facilities too, so there's quite a bit there. And so we've kind of come up with a plan to kind of address that. But you will see quite a bit of capital going into the golf courses moving forward. Doesn't Run also has been able to increase their rates. They had so many rounds last year that they no longer have capacity really to, to take more rounds on. So the only way to increase the budget there is to charge more. And so they staffed it a, a study of kind of neighboring courses. And as a result, we realized we've, we've got some room to grow. So we've definitely increased our, our fees, you'll see that at Pheasant Run as well, just to kind of, again, keep pace up with, with some of the expenses. Of course, we repaved the North Nine last year, and we look forward to paving the, the other eighteen. I know we're all, all excited about that, so they're looking forward to that. And then really, this slide here is just combining both golf courses, so you can kind of see the overall picture of how those funds come. But again, the operating revenue kind of continues to increase, fortunately, and it's, it's been able to outpace the expenses, operating expenses. And then there's one more on the community improvement side. So this is usually where a lot of our, our park development projects will fall in the future. Just a couple of small items there, we're hoping to put some AEDs into the, into some of the parks right now that don't have them. We've got a couple of outdoor AEDs at, like Independence and here in Heritage, but we want to make sure we get those out to some of our other sites. So, so that's in there. And then we've got a fifty thousand dollar land improvement that's kind of been in there every year to kind of help us with as things come up. Sometimes we've patched potholes in the park with that, we've done some asphalt projects. We've done a lot with, with that fifty thousand through the years, so. With that, I will take any questions? I don't, didn't know what time I started, but I'm sure somebody over there did. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks Jeanette. All right, I'm gonna go back to my presentation, so I think it else, you had my starter presentation. We're gonna get right back into that one. Okay. So I'm gonna kind of briefly go over a summary of what we just covered. The next three slides that I have are really the capital projects, and all of the other directors already covered the capital within their presentation. So I wasn't gonna spend any time covering these items, except to just point out at the bottom of the second page of the capital, these are the non-public safety. Basically, the general fund subsidized capital items, they're not water and sewer. Their golf is included in here because the general fund does subsidize the golf fund. But the total capital included in the budget for twenty-two that is somehow paid for by the general fund is about seven point seven million dollars this year. The public safety, which both the director, public safety directors spoke to, totals one point four million dollars. We've been showing this the last few years, just so the board understands where the debt is falling. Now, there's a big bond that expires, or we make our last payment in twenty-twenty-three, and it was the old bond really for this building and the Village Theater when we did that construction. So fortunately, one's finally falling off the books, and we pay about two million dollars a year currently on that bond. So that's good news, that that's coming off. The, the debt that's left here. If you go kind of across the top, does it work? I don't know if this thing's on or not. Okay, well, looking at the top where it says the public safety and non-public safety, those debt issues are the twenty-twenty bond issue that we issued for the CIP, for the nineteen through twenty-twenty-three CIP. That's that bond, that's, those will be paid through twenty-thirty-one. You can see the water and sewer, the big debt with the water bond is gonna be paid off in twenty-twenty-seven. And then again, the golf course is part of that twenty-twenty CIP as well. So I just wanted to show that, that we really only have a couple outstanding bonds, but the one is payable through twenty-thirty-one. Looking at this overwhelming spreadsheet, it, it kind of summarizes where all of the revenue is, and we listed out for all of the funds. So I'm really gonna focus on, for the most part, the differences between twenty-three and twenty-four. We do show the actuals through all those years, just, just kind of a point of reference. Twenty-twenty's a kind of an odd year to look at with a pandemic in there. But, so kind of look at that one more with a grain of salt, I guess, but we've always kind of showed the three-year. And the twenty-twenty-two actuals, that is unaudited, we're currently in the, in the middle of our audit. I don't expect any major changes to it, but don't hold me to it, because we're completing that. But in the general fund, the budgeted revenue for twenty-three is thirty-three million, and twenty-four, it's thirty-five million. So going up a couple million dollars. Eight hundred thousand of that's related to property taxes, and state shared revenue's about six hundred thousand dollars of that. And there's also the overhead admin fee that we allocate out to the other funds, which is, you know, intergovernmental charges, you, you saw the police fund reference that. Those monies coming back in increased really as a result of the allocation of the different positions that we increased within the township. We allocate a portion of those out to all the funds because the different positions work with the different funds in some capacity. So, so that's that major increase. I will point out, even though I said I typically don't go back to the previous few years, I want to talk about twenty-two for a minute because it looks so high. That is really a result of the ARPA funds that came in, that we had to recognize as revenue in twenty-twenty-two. of the ARPA funds that came in, that we had to recognize as revenue in 2022, the one-time federal grant that came in, as well as the census adjustment that we got for the state shared revenue. We got about $1 million extra in '22 for that, that we won't continue, will obviously get higher state shared revenue as a result of our census, but they didn't start that on time. So the state paid us back for what they owed us from 2021 that they hadn't started yet. So we got that in 2022. The roads fund increased by half a million. That's strictly the property tax revenue that comes in. The fire fund increased by about $2.1 million. That's a result of the property tax revenue being up $1.7 million. And the ambulance revenue is up about half a million dollars because of all the runs and the call volume. Police funds, revenue's increasing by about $2.5 million, and that's due to the property tax revenue. The community center fund, which is the summit, that went from 4.6 to 5.6. That's a million-dollar increase, and that was 100% related to revenue coming from the general fund to offset their subsidy. So not, not an increase in their operating revenues. It's really the general fund transfer in that's subsidizing that. Going down, the revenues are fairly consistent until you get to community improvement fund, number 246. The revenue there is going from 2.9 down to $660,000. If you recall, when I had just spoken about that bond issue that we paid off, that we're paying off in '23, we transfer money from the general fund into community improvement to help pay for that bond. Since that's gone, that general fund transfer is being eliminated. So that's the primary difference there. Really scanning down the rest of these funds, they're fairly consistent. The, going all the way down to 401, the capital fund, the CIP, we created that fund, that 401 fund to, to account for the CIP, the capital improvement plans from 19 to 23. Moving forward in '24, we're putting all those items specifically in the department's budgets because we didn't issue a bond associated with those. So we're going to leave those in the department's budgets. So we're not expecting to see anything else moving forward in that currently. And the rest of the funds are fairly consistent. So unless you have any questions, I was not going to go into any detail on those.
Why did CDBG go down so much?
CDBG is a result of the CDBG COVID funds that we still have outstanding, that we would expect those to, I think those expire at the end of this year, or in June of '23, in June of '23. But our, our normal CDBG allocation is about $400,000 a year. And so that's what we have in the, included in the budget moving forward. Okay, I have a few different slides that talk about all the expenditures. So this first slide, it actually includes the 19, but we're showing the allocation really by the funds, kind of overall, where's all the money, all the budget dollars that we spend in the township, the, you know, $130 million roughly included in our budget each year. What's the breakdown of that? So the blue, on the bottom blue, that's a general fund. So general funds roughly anywhere between 19 to 24% of the overall spending at the township. And this year is different. We're falling in the 23% range. Total public safety, including both police and fire, has ranged between 28 to 32%. We're still within that range at 29%. The summit and golf has ranged between 4 to 7%. We're at the higher end this year with the golf, but we're at 7% there. Solid waste fund, which is the garbage and rubbish collection, pretty consistent, 3 to 4%. The water and sewers, 25% this year, still within the ballpark. Capital is the next one up, which obviously is significantly reduced. That is the combination of the community improvement and the CIP fund. The CIP fund we talked about was going away. And then the roads is pretty consistent. And the other is everything that's kind of remaining in there, the 911s, all the other funds that I didn't talk about that were on the previous slide are included in that top row. A bar chart, just another way to look at it. I'm not going to spend a lot of time, but you know, same, same concept, everything stays relatively consistent. I really want to spend most of the time talking about this one, where, because these are the items I would talk about really on the spreadsheet that is on the next slide. The first, first column is a general fund. So the actual decrease in general fund expenditures is $1.7 million between '23 and '24. So it actually decreased. The majority of that is, IT spoke about this, they had about $1 million in their contingency for the ERP. That's gone. So that accounts for a part of that. Well, the big expense is gone anyways, will not be incurred in '24. And then there is also a big, there's about $600,000 more in the '23 budget than '24 for the sidewalk program than is currently in that. So that makes up the big difference in the general fund. And that's the neighborhood, not the, not the gaps. The roads fund is decreased by about $1.4 million. And Director Smith's talked about, we have the five-year plan on right now, what projects we're working on on the roads, based on the preliminary road plan project. The expenses for '24 just happened to be less than what we have budgeted in '23, but that's going to constantly change depending on which directions we're headed. And Director Smith spoke about the projects. The Beck Road project is included in that, and the Geddes Road is included in that right now. The fire fund is up $615,000. It's actually an increase of about $1.1 million in wages and fringes, but the capital is down about $600,000. The police fund did decrease overall by $2.3 million, and that is, the majority of that is because of the capital that we have going on for '23 for the, the building renovation next door. The community center and golf fund, the expenses increased by $1.8 million. The summit is $900,000 of that increase due to capital. And then golf capital increased $350,000. And then the salaries and wages for golf also increased by about $190,000. Community improvement capital and capital decreased. That is a result of the bond being fully paid off. And then also, the CIP is also going down there as well. Additionally, the ARPA dollars, I think, were recorded as an expense last year in that, in that fund, and that will not be recurring in the '24 budget until we reallocate the money that, with the board is set aside for the different projects. Otherwise, the, the other big one in the other column is the 911 fund decreasing. So the other went down by 1.3. We had a big expense in '23 for the building renovation next door as well. So this is the big spreadsheet. I just went over basically all of the big differences on there. You know, the, the difference between those funds were on the previous, on the previous slide, so I wasn't going to spend any time going over this in a lot of detail, unless there are questions on that. Actually, let me ask, stop there for a minute to see if you did have any questions on the expenses before I move on. Okay.
So I'm sorry. Any questions?
Okay. This next slide is showing where the fund balance would, will potentially end up. So I think this is kind of where the big question always is from the board. So when you, when you go down the list, starting, and again, this goes by fund, the '23 fund balance here is based on preliminarily where we're going to end up in '22, where we think we're going to end up before the audit's complete, but should be pretty close. This is based on how the budget was adopted in '23 for the, all these funds. So not based on where I think we're going to end up, you know, if I think we've been conservative with some of the, both the revenue and expenses. But this is based on what the amended budget, which is currently issued. So at the end of '23, if we spent, received all the money we budgeted and expended all the money we expended, this is where the fund balance would end up in '23. And then the '24 proposed revenues was from a slide a few pages ago. The '24 proposed expenses are from the previous slide, and this shows us the change in the fund balance. So we're, based on this, asking the board, not asking the board to adopt or proposing a budget of using fund balance of almost $3.6 million in the general fund, which would bring our fund balance to $20 million in the general fund at the end of 2024. Roads fund, we're actually adding to fund balance, fire fund adding, and police fund adding to fund balance. Using in the cable TV fund, as a result, mostly of the capital expenses. And really going down the list, we're using some in a couple of the other funds as well, but we're having a positive fund balance. So it's really, I, I know we had a lot of expenses. I know we had a lot of capital. There's some stuff that we still have to add to the budget, that we know we have to add to the budget. We will be tweaking this before we ask the board to adopt this. But based on the snapshot of where we are and what's here today, this is where the fund balance would be if we spent everything that is in this budget. However, I want to show the historical difference. Now, you know, the worst-case scenario is that we spend everything. Historically, that has not been the case, though. If you look at, and I didn't include '22 on this slide yet, but if you look at for the last five years, ending with a 21-year end, this shows all of the, how much we've been budgeting to use. And each of these five years, and then our main funds, on our general fund, our fire fund, and our police fund, we've always budgeted to use fund balance pretty significantly. The next column over shows if we've used it, if we use some fund balance, it'd be a negative number, but if we added to it, it's a positive number. And then it shows the difference. In each of these, you know, last five years, and '22 is going to be no different, we're actually adding to fund balance. Our difference is very significant than where we've started the budget. So really, ending the year at a $20 million fund balance at the end of '24, is that a possibility? Yeah, I mean, it is a possibility, but, I mean, we budget very conservatively. So I really think the story's a good story, that we're really in good financial, a good financial position at the township. Is there any questions on that?
Looks like we've put $12 million or so back into the fund balance in the last five years. So when you add up those numbers in the middle column.
Absolutely. Yeah, it's, it's, it's a good story. Okay. The last thing, you know, the next steps from the finance department, based on, unless we hear something different from the board or board desire, we will not be asking the board to adopt a budget until November. We always come back to the board in October timeframe to kind of show what we're asking for, for, you know, the, kind of the final budget. And we always have some tweaks because we start this budget process so early, and then we find out some other information throughout the year that might be important that the departments are asking the board to incorporate into the budget, or the board might ask for some items that they want incorporated into the budget that are not here yet either. So we'll, we'll be making those tweaks. We are going to be having a future study session to update on the priority-based budgeting. We provided the board back in January, I guess, with the preliminary priority-based budgeting report that had the breakdown of, between the, all the different categories and where the spending is. The spending priorities has not significantly changed as far as the programming for what the department's added to their budget for 2024. But the departments have not yet had an opportunity to go back in and tweak everything for '24 yet. So the departments need to get back in. We have a training set up next week, I believe, to have a refresher course on how to update the software. So we will be bringing, we're targeting for June, a study, a study session for June to talk about the priority-based budgeting and working these numbers that we just showed the board into that priority-based budgeting. So you can, you can see what that looks like. Also, we're hoping to do at the same study session, an update for our five-year capital improvement plan to show, we talked about the '24 capital. The departments have been working on an actual five-year, so it's actually starting in '23 with what the board currently has. But we have, I think it's '23 through '27, we currently have been working on. So we can present that to the boards, so the board can have a full picture of looking at, here's what the department thinks we want, and to get the board's input as to, are we comfortable with this? Do we need to make some tweaks? Do we have to push some stuff? Do we have to add some stuff? So we're also targeting to do that at the same timeframe. And then complete the five-year projection, assuming, taking, taking a look at this budget, adding the items from the 2023 board priority list to this projection, adding this capital listing. So the board has a full picture of what we're looking at. And then to get some more board direction on, does this look good to you? Do you want to make some tweaks to the '24 budget? Or what, what do we want to do moving forward to that? So we're targeting that for June, because we'd like to get some feedback for the board for not only the '24 before we adopt it, but the '25 budget as we start to prepare that. And if we can do that presentation in June, that gives the departments an opportunity to actually incorporate what the board is looking to have in the '25 budget. So we can have that ready when we present the '25 budget in October to the board. So those are our plans, and I'm happy to answer any questions with that.
Will, will priority-based budgeting change the look of what we end up approving for, in November, for the budget?
So priority-based budgeting is an extra step, basically, on, on what we need to do. We are still required to adopt budgets in accordance with the state law, which is going to show it by, on a fund basis. But we're trying to take, we take that information, and it should be hopefully more of a seamless process, that we can take our data and upload it into the priority-based budgeting software. And then it should, you know, filter and automatically go based on how the, we're going to have a morrow study session to explain it, but basically, every account is coded to a specific program. So, you know, so Wendy Trumbull has, my position is going to be uploaded into the budget, and it's going to say so much of a percentage of my time is on budget preparation, so much is on audit preparation, so much is reviewing RBAs before board meetings. So it has, automatically, it's going to take that and update it into priority-based budgeting each time we do that.
So in the end, it'll still look like the funds that we, when we, when it comes to us to approve, it'll still look like it always has?
Yeah. When we adopt the budget, it needs to be in compliance with state law. But what it is going to do is help identify what we're actually spending the money on, you know, because you have to approve it based on the line items, or fund totals like that. But that fund total doesn't really tell the story of what does the finance department actually do? When we're, when you're approving a finance department budget, what are you approving? You're approving budget preparation, you're approving, so, so priority-based budgeting is going to help tell that story, and you'll see it that way. But we have to formally approve the budget the way that we present it.
Great.
You're welcome.
So how much of the fund balance do we need to keep, you know, to be in a good financial standing?
So, so the board currently has a policy, and this has been a policy for 20 years or so?
Probably, yeah. I remember talking about it that long ago.
Yeah, I think they, I think they established it, but it's a 15 percent. That's weird. She's like 29 years old. But it's a 15% fund balance level, and that's, it's in accordance, that's in line with what the state says. If you're, if, I think the state actually says if you're at 13%, that's a trigger for a financial emergency situation. So we set it higher at 15%. But, so we're, we're higher than that. We're still in good shape. I think based on this, you know, we have about $15 million of a wiggle room in their cushion in the general fund. So we're, we're financially comfortable.
No? Thanks, Wendy.
You're welcome.
Thanks, everybody. Thank you very much. Really appreciate it. We're going into workshop meeting after this, but we'll close this meeting out first. Am I on here? So we have public comment. Is there any public comment? I can look online here. We have zero attendees online. Okay. Anyone in the room, public comment? Any public comment? Public comment? Nope. Okay. Good. Thank you. All right. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Treasurer Slavens. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. We're adjourned. Thanks, everybody. Good job.